Let's call us committee whole meeting for April fifteenth, twenty twenty five. The order, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Barrera.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Messiakel.
Present.
Alderman Denal.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Sville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
We had approval of the meeting minutes for Tuesday, April first, twenty twenty five. Committee meeting, the motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Let's go on to the mayor's report, Mr. Muhammad.
Mayor, City Council. But if we celebrate the month of April, we, there are a number of celebrations that happen throughout this month. It's National Financial Literacy Month, and literally just an hour ago, four o'clock, we launched the Aurora Promise Child Savings Account with kindergarteners, future kindergarteners from West Aurora Schools and East Aurora Schools upstairs with the leadership of both districts as we move to solidify their future eighteen years from now or as they head into school, or thirteen years from now as they head into school. It's also Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month, and you know each April. We invite our Sikh community to join us. This month is very special. The founder of Sikhism, Guru Nanak Devji, was born in April fourteen sixty nine. Vesaki, one of the cultural festivals, is celebrated in April, and this month is designated as Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month in Illinois to recognize the many ways that Sikh Americans contribute to the Illinois community, but here specifically to our Aurora community. Our Sikh brothers and sisters are involved in Aurora Interfaith Alliance, they're involved in our boards and commissions, and an integral part of our community. And so tonight, as we seek to promote understanding and combat anti-Sikh bigotry, we acknowledge tonight, again, April as Seek Awareness Month. We invite Mayor Irvin down for the proclamation, and if our Sikh brothers and sisters can please join us down front. Let's give them a round of applause as they make their way down. And after the mayor issues the proclamation, we do have remarks from the community.
It is my honor to read this proclamation for Seek Awareness Month and Appreciation Month, April twenty twenty five. Whereas Sikhs have been living in the United States for more than a hundred and twenty years, and during the early twentieth century, thousands of Sikh Americans worked on farms and lumber mills and mines and on the Oregon Pacific and Eastern Railroad. And whereas Sikhism is the fifth largest religion in the world, and today there are more than twenty-five million Sikhs worldwide and an estimated five hundred thousand Sikh Americans and twenty-five thousand Sikh Americans, uh, five thousand Sikh Americans, United States and twenty-five thousand here in the city of Aurora. Whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and make rich contributions to social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States. And whereas with a focus on equity and inclusion, the city of Aurora is committed to making sure everyone has a seat at the One Aurora table and appreciate our Sikh community for their community service efforts and for being represented on the Aurora Interfaith Alliance. Whereas the city of Aurora encourages all of our residents to take the opportunity to better understand and recognize and appreciate the rich history and shared experience of Sikh Americans. So now therefore I, Mayor Richard C. Irvin, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty five to be Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month in the city of Aurora and encourage all Aurora residents to get to know our Sikh neighbors throughout the year. Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Mayor Irvin, and esteemed member of Aurora City Council for this opportunity to address the significance of Sikh Awareness Month. Sikhism originated in northern India in fourteen sixty nine and is the world's fifth largest organized religion. The term Sikh translates to disciple or learner, reflecting our commitment to continuous growth and understanding. We believe in one God. Our faith is anchored in our core principle of unity, equality, honesty, hard work, and selfless service. The most visible identity of Sikhs is the turban. Some people say maybe a hat, but this is turban. The turbans serve as a reminder that we never forget our values. Ninety-nine percent of the people we see wearing turbans in America are Sikhs. Sikhs actively engage with their communities, volunteering in homeless shelters, schools, government, and disaster relief efforts and such as setting up foods and medical camps in Los Angeles, the, you know, the fire disaster we had, also in Ukraine and anywhere in the world. Our temples called gurdwaras and which translate to guru's door, and it is open to everyone regardless of faith. We have two gurdwaras in Chicago, one is in Palatine, another one is in Wheaton. The holiest gurdwara is in India, and it is called Golden Temple, which serves hundred thousand people daily with the cooked food and prepared by the volunteers. As defender of freedom and justice for centuries, Sikhs have also served in military in the First World War and the Second World War. More than eighty thousand Sikhs sacrifices their life fighting for allied forces during these two world wars. Sikh immigrants to the U.S. in eighteen hundreds were primarily farmers and helped build their transnational railroads. Our community has since trans diversified into many fields, notable Sikh includes, you know, McDougal, a fashion designer. Ajay Banga, he's a CEO of the World Bank, and Narinder Singh, who's a founder of Fiber Optics, which is a backbone of our internet. There are approximately, approximately seven hundred thousand Sikhs in the U.S. and twenty-five thousand approximate in the Illinois and Chicago area. We are your neighbors, we are PTA members, and we are advisory board volunteers. Like the U.S. Bill of Rights, Sikh scripture promotes equality and the freedom to pursue path of peace and prosperity. And like the United States, Sikh stands against injustice and inequality wherever it is in the world. Six values of freedom, equality, and justice for all are the similar values upon which America was founded. We believe that telling the story of who we are and what we stand for is an important step in the building bridges to connect us with all who love this. We welcome any question and encourages, encouraged to visit the share a free meal with us at our gurdwaras in Wheaton and/or Palatine. And thank you, Mayor and City Council, once again for recognizing Sikh awareness. Thank you very much.
Round of applause for all of our Sikh neighbors. Thank you. We appreciate your participation. This, this board here kind of captures the last year. That we've spent a lot of time together here in Aurora and at the temple in Wheaton. So thank you for the invitation, acknowledging the presence of Mohinder Singh, the head priest. Thank you. And our good friend Jasmeet Singh, who connects us and keeps us all connected. Round of applause again to our Sikh community. We thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, that concludes the mayor's report. Let's, I see a lot of folks are, are here for a public comment. I will go ahead and have the clerk read the rules of public comment.
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the committee of the whole for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the committee of the whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you call the first speaker wishing off for public comment?
Tom Hergit.
Mr. Herger, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now, sir.
Oh, thank you very much. My talk is How Great It Is. This is a thank you to our mayor. I'd like to give a moment on my credentials. I'm just not up here to talk. I'm an Auroraan, born in Aurora, baptized in Aurora, raised and educated in Aurora. First job out of college was on the East Coast, but I missed Aurora, moved back, came to Chicago, but stayed in Aurora, hired Auroraans, brought Chicago salaries back to Aurora, volunteer at the Eponymous Middle School here in Aurora, married an Auroraan. I'm an A-plus sponsorship chair, an alumni chair, so I'm an A-towner. And I will not be moving to any satellite suburb or town. I'm staying here. This is the center of the universe, the best city in the state, it's my town. And I'd like to thank the mayor for keeping Aurora, making Aurora strong and keeping it strong. Just some examples, housing, new developments, the Forrest Farm property north of Indian Trail, near Randall Road, south of Jericho, new housing in our town. There's new employers, Cubs Food, Aldi, Walmart, Lowe's, and countless warehouses lining the toll roads. A new downtown, my church is a downtown parish. Years ago, we couldn't even meet there at night. Now, it's a very safe place. There's abandoned buildings, they're either restored, such as Crosby, or razed, Masonic Temple, YMCA. There's venues, new restaurants, the casino, we saw the writing on the wall, but managed to keep it in Aurora. And most of all, my favorite, the traffic circle at Sullivan and Highland. It's fun to go around. I try not to go more than three times. But those are just some examples of why Aurora has been great. Mayor Irvin, your experience has turned knowledge into wisdom, and I hope you don't go far and can still contribute to another golden era. Thank you.
Call the next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Allison Hergit.
Ms. Herger, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Irvin, members of the committee of the whole, city council, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. Mayor Irvin, you really didn't think you could leave office without hearing from your favorite Black Hawk now, did you? I want to thank you for your unwavering efforts in making our hometown a better place. In my seventy-plus years of living in Aurora, I have experienced many ups, downs, changes, and transformations. In the eighties and nineties, while raising our children here, Aurora was a scary place with crime, drugs, gangs, and downtown Aurora especially was to be avoided at all costs. Now, due in no small part to your vision and your hard work, Aurora has become a safe place where people from all parts want to come to live, work, and play. On a personal note, as a retired educator and twenty-year member of the West Aurora District One Twenty-nine Board of Education, I was always impressed by your frequent presence along with members of your staff and aldermen. At many of our district events, what this clearly indicated was a sincere commitment to the kids we mutually serve. You were there to support and encourage and not to infiltrate and control like what we see in Chicago. At your State of the Education address last September, it became abundantly clear that your goal was to provide the best educational opportunities for all of Aurora's kids, be they Blackhawks, Tomcats, Mustangs, Warriors, Wildcats, Panthers, Wolves, or Bulldogs. Mayor Irvin, you've restored the pride in our great city. Over the years, you have done, what you have done for Aurora parallels your own personal journey. You picked it up by the bootstraps, overcoming all odds, and made it second to none. So even though you wear red and black and I wear red and blue, always remember this, east is east and west is west, but in Aurora, Irvin was best.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Laura Evans.
Ms. Evans, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now. Feel free to readjust the microphone if you need to. There you go.
Thank you. I just have some quick community concerns about the proposed truck stop at Eola and deal. I know it'll be discussed later, so I just thought I'd bring out our concerns now. One concern is the noise from the, the Jake braking using the engine compression to brake. Trucks will do that, you'll hear that big letdown of the air. It's already a nuisance, it's just going to be enhanced with more truck traffic. Additional truck traffic on Eola, the traffic on Eola before and after school hours at Matia is horrendous from both directions. I think a stop there, especially if you have an entrance and exit on Eola, is just going to create a mess. And again, it's very close to the high school, it's a quarter mile, so there's concerns for the students' health and safety. There has already been an increase, in fact, we were going to call the city about this, on Old Molitor Road. It's, it's the light that's right by Matia. A lot of trucks have been using that as a shortcut through to deal, and now with the gas station there, especially if they miss their entrance, we're, we're going to see a lot more truck traffic down Old Molitor Road. So that's something that we're very concerned about. It's, trucks are prohibited on this road, but they go through it so quick, it's, it's, they're there, but we see it because we live there. Instead of being a truck stop, could there be a gas station and then just not have the diesel lines? That's an option. There is a commed substation right next door to the station, to the proposed spot as well as natural gas lines. Thought that should be a very, it's a concern, because I know it was a concern for previous things being built in that area. At the wildlife, there's a lot of natural wildlife. Again, with that being gone, they're going to be forced elsewhere, and we already have wolves and coyotes in the neighborhood, and now with less natural areas, there's going to be even more. I know in some of the, the previous notes, they said that, that traffic won't be affected, but has an environmental impact study or a traffic study been done? And if so, we'd like to see the results of that, not just taking somebody's word for, okay, it won't affect you. Because we did that with Cirrus One in two thousand seventeen when we came to a city council meeting, and I can tell you right now, the noise is horrendous. It's fourteen hundred fans going nonstop, generators every Thursday now. It is just unbearable. So that's, again, more concerns, and what kind of guarantee is the city council going to give us or, or the proposed spot that if this does come to fruition and our concerns do meet, you know, it happens, what are they going to do about it? The truck stop has roughly fifty parking spots, so it didn't really suggest a quick trip. I know other gas stations have diesel, so it's not really a gas station, it's a truck stop when you have specific truck lines. So again, it's a truck stop.
Madam, that concludes your three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Curtis Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Yes, sir, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, Curtis Wilson. So last week I spoke on the hate that just really has, it still weighs on me, still weighs on folks in the community. I did ask for people to send me information regarding collusion and untenable behavior, stuff that was inappropriate, and I was actually able to get some. So let me start by saying, kudos to the Aurora Township Democrats. So what happens is, is when anyone wants to be a part of the endorsed slate, if you will, the Aurora Township Democrats will send out a questionnaire, and all candidates pursuing office will get the opportunity to fill this out. Many responded and returned their questionnaires. The answers were scored based upon the ones which best reflect the values of the Democrats. And for Ward Seven, that was our honorable Brandon Tolliver. Let me now go to the Naperville Township Democrats. So they decided in their wisdom to withhold that process from the electorate. They did not ask the incumbents or the non-slated candidates to actually fill out those questionnaires. Why? Who knows? I believe it's pay-to-play. So if you look at their website, you meet the candidates. It's not the candidates of, it's not all the candidates, it's only the slated candidates. How did they get that? Which Democrats were represented? The ones who were automatically gifted the NTD Naperville Township Democrat endorsement? What was the cost of this pay-to-play? How much did it cost? Did it cost you to sell your soul? Why? Why does NTD have a history of deceiving the electorate and cheating fellow Democrats out of the opportunity to just compete fairly? It's unacceptable. So they did this for the other candidates, so here are five other slated candidates, or slew of candidates, where they actually provided an official, an official endorsement. Why was Aurora, the mayor, the alderman at large, Ward Seven, Fox Valley Park District Commissioner, why were they not considered? And these are all Democrats. Why did they not get an official recommendation? But yet, the ones who were slated are actually listed on the website. How does that work? It's disgusting. When I look at the website for who are we as the Democrats, Aurora Naperville Township, they're supposed to represent Aurora, Naperville, and Warrenville. They also are supposed to coordinate with the governor's office. In their preamble, they say, people who want to increase justice and secure equity in American society. That's, that's a laugh. And then the chair of the party, who has intimate relationships with the slate that was put on there, also says that he's an inclusive leader for equity. I find it troubling and problematic, because why? These individuals get to be listed on the slate that's sent to hundreds of, hundreds of voters without having any other opportunity for others to be represented. I also have this for you guys, an A-plus for Aurora Township and an F for the Naperville Township Democrats.
That concludes your three minutes.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Todd Van Olen.
Mr. Von Olen, you have three minutes to speak, and I see you have some friends with you today.
I know you're all anxious to get home and celebrate Tax Day with your families, so we're going to make this quick. I'd like to bring up Carl Hicks and some of the members of the Hicks Youth Club.
So this is a little tune written by the famous songwriting trio of Lennon, McCartney, and Van Olen.
A little arrangement by Carl Hicks.
Ready?
Ready?
One, two, three, four.
For the benefit of Aurora Uke Fest, a show on April 26 at Tavern Stage. The Birdwatchers will all be there, Lady Lisa Mannion fare all the rage. There'll be men and women, ukuleles mostly, with tankards of real beer. In his way, Little Rev will conquer the world. The celebrated Aaron Bear performs his tunes while in a chair at Two Brothers. The Hicks Uke Band will play and sing. The songs will have a familiar ring and some others. Mrs. M&amp;H assure the public their production will be second to none. And Hoopili really sings a hula.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, Mayor-elect, it's spring and everyone's fancy turns to thoughts of ukuleles. The 8th Annual Aurora Uke Fest will be held at Two Brothers Rock House on the 26th and 27th. Saturday, we have performances by the Hicks Uke Club, Hoopili, Hoopilu, Hoopiluana, Aaron Bear, Little Rev, Ukulele Lady, Lisa Mannion, and making a stop on their mega world tour, The Birdwatchers.
The show begins at 10:04. Ukuleles hit the floor with lots of sound.
Very good, Todd.
And it's straight as MC undertakes to expound. Having been some months in preparation, a splendid time is guaranteed for all. And this night's drumming fun is topping the bill.
Sunday's workshops with all those performers plus Uncle John's music and Carl Hicks. www.auroraukefest.com.
Thank you. We've still got 16 seconds.
I'm impressed you finished that in three minutes and had 16 seconds left to go. Great job. Madam Clerk, you call the next speaker, the next act. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Sandy Schmidt.
Ms. Schmidt, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Obviously, I can't follow that. Councilmen and women, thank you very much for having me today. My name is Sandy Schmidt. I'm in Ward 5, and I'm newly elected to the Fox Valley Park District Board. I'm speaking to you today on item 25-0316 about the reappointment of nine people to the Aurora Civic Authority Board. Please note that eight of the nine seats expired in 2017 to 2019, and one has been vacant. My parents had a very chaotic relationship, and they divorced when I was nine. I never knew the extent of what was going on until later life. Why? Because my parents chose to be respectful and wanted me to have a good relationship with both of them so they didn't trash each other, withhold money, or visits. This would have made my life more chaotic. As I reflect back on my life, I realize that they gave me and my siblings a true gift. The gift is that they put aside their issues and treated each other with civility, which showed them to be true leaders and respectful of not just each other, but of us kids. We are in essence going through a messy divorce. Today, I'm asking you all to be leaders, to put aside your differences and do what is best for the people of Aurora. To do that, you must stop with these last-minute appointments to various boards, stop trying to shove through gas stations, because that's what Mayor Irvin wants you to do. Alderman Lash, one, because people are tired of the abuse of power, and we do not want things rammed down our throats. This is nothing more than Mayor Irvin's last ditch-up attempt to create chaos and have the last word. We, the people, your constituents, want a seat of the table, and now is your chance to break free of the bad habits and give us a fresh start. If the candidates up for reappointment were a good choice eight years ago, and they're a good choice today, then they will be a good choice in a month. There is absolutely no reason that I can see why they should be elected now and why you need to vote yesterday. Your vote of no today will show us that you want to stop the chaos and treat us, we, the people, with the respect that we deserve. So let's all take a deep breath, center ourselves, and do what's right. Vote no to these appointments. Thank you.
Call the next speaker. Madam Clerk. Ms. Galicia, after. Ms. Speaker beginning now.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Mercy. I am -- thank you for giving me this moment to speak. I am here to represent the Illinois The Honda Organization. Just a reminder, I did leave some sponsorship forms on some of the aldermen and women. I did not have enough copies at that time for everyone, so I will be dropping off some for the ones that did not get any. I just wanted to remind you, our festival is coming up June 28. I'd like for you guys to at least come and check us out. August 9, we will be presenting the scholarship to the recipients. Another event that I would love to see you guys come. Makes a little knot in my throat when we are giving out these scholarships because those kids are so thankful, and this is why we try to keep going and helping the parents with this education because the funds keep getting smaller and smaller every year. And again, now with the state cutting down the funds also, it makes it harder for the schools to help the students that they would like to see their education continue. So this is our way of giving back to the community. So I really do need your help and your support. If you can, please find it in your heart to give us a little token of your grace. Thanks. Have a nice evening, and we'll see you soon.
I believe that's the final speaker for public comment. Let's go on to the next section of the agenda, committee reports. Madam Chairwoman Patty Smith, can you get the Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee report, please?
Certainly can, Mr. Mayor. The Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee met on April 9, 2025, and reviewed the following items. 25-0247, An Ordinance Establishing a Conditional Use Plan Development Approving the Harvest Point Plan Description and Amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Aurora by Modifying the Zoning Map Attached Thereto to an Underlining Zone of R2 One Family Dwelling District and OS1 Conservation, Open Space, and Drainage for the Property Located at Randant Road and North of Butterfield Road. Consent?
Consent.
Next item is 25-0248, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Aurora by Modifying the Zoning Map Attached Thereto to Rezone Approximately .3 Acres of the Property Located East of Randant Road and North of Butterfield Road from R1C One Family Dwelling District with a Conditional Use to R1 One Family Dwelling District to Remove the Property from Marmion Academy Plan Description.
Consent.
Consent.
No objections. I'm going to say.
And 25-0249, A Resolution Approving the Preliminary Plan and Plot of Lots 1 through 62 of Harvest Point Subdivision, a Vacant Land Located East of Randant Road and North of Butterfield Road. Consent?
No objections. I'm going to say.
And, Mr. Mayor, that is all the Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee has today.
Thank you very much. Chairman Franco, can you get the Finance Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on April 10, 2025, and reviewed the following items. 25-0290, An Ordinance Amending the Ward 8 Budget for the Fiscal Year 2025. This amendment will allow the 8th Ward Alderwoman to partner with the Eola Branch to provide a community meeting space needed in that area.
Consent.
No objections. I'm going to say.
25-0077, A Resolution Approving Renewal of an Agreement for Consulting Services with Marketplace City, 20 North Wacker Drive, Suite 1,000, Chicago, for the Purpose of Performing Technology Purchasing Services for a three-year term with an additional two-year option for a total award of $375,000. The city has saved approximately $2.4 million utilizing Marketplace. The IT Department wishes to add additional services to help them with research, budgeting support, and additional access to the Marketplace services.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman Lash.
I would like to ask a few follow-up questions on this offline and hold this off the consent agenda.
Unfinished. Next item.
Next one is 25-0252, A Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Labor Agreement Between the City of Aurora and Local 461, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, AFL-CIO. This agreement includes additional contributions by the employees to the health insurance premiums and a 4% raise for two years and a 4.5% increase for year number three.
Consent.
No objections. I'm going to say.
Next one is 25-0253, A Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Phase 2 Engineering Agreement with HR Green Incorporated, maximum amount of $153,789, and appropriating motor fuel tax funds for the city's Safe Roads School Projects in School District 129, 131, and 204. This grant is an 80/20 split. However, preliminary engineering and phase 2 costs are not eligible for the grant.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman Buck.
Thank you. Question for engineering on this. I don't know if Rupa's here or someone. Jason's here. Okay.
Mr. Bauer. Good afternoon. Jason Bauer, Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Excellent memo. Thank you for that. It talked about the whole history. Can you tell us a little bit about the projects that were denied leading into this? Are we still pursuing them? What is their status?
Denied by the state during the application process.
Yes.
So every year that -- this was probably the last Safe Roads to School project that we went out for. I don't think we've submitted any since this time. So each time that call for project comes out, we reach out to the school districts and to the alderpeople to see if there's any interest. But this, I believe, is the last one that we've applied for.
Yeah. When this got applied for, one got denied, the one in 308. So is there...
So we have not submitted that one again, but we can during the next call based on interest in, you know, other competing programs.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Consent.
No objections. I'm going to say.
Next item is 25-0286, Resolution Authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to Execute Contracts with electricity suppliers to provide electricity to the City of Aurora. This is for city facilities only, not residential. The contract would be for 48 months and 36 months for street lighting.
No objections. I'm going to say.
Next item is 25-0288, A Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Sales Tax Revenue Sharing Agreement with Valley Honda to Modernize and Expand Its Existing Dealership Location. I'm assuming we'll have somebody from Moed come up and speak to this.
Mr. Alexandria and Mr. Minnick.
Alex Alexander, Chief Management Officer. I still am not Trevor Dick, but actually Trevor Dick is here. So I gave the presentation and finance along with Mr. Minnick. So what is before you is a sales tax rebate agreement that staff has worked out with the owners of Valley Honda. Mr. Rick Williams and someone from Valley Honda are here to answer questions. Also, I should note in your -- in the legislative item, there's also some additional slides provided by Valley Honda that talk about the impact and effect, the positive impact and effect that Valley Honda has had on our business community in Aurora. So the overriding purpose of this stemmed from Honda Corporate mandating some major renovation that will improve efficiencies and add service capabilities. You might recall, the last time we dealt with this that you approved was with the Hyundai nearby that led to the successful establishment of a brand-new Hyundai dealership and then a brand-new luxury Genesis across the street. So we have based this on, and you'll see the project on the next slide, four major purposes here. If you're familiar with the Honda dealership there, it is very successful. It's one of the busiest, I believe, in the Midwest, if not the country. So they're proposing adding a third lane to the service drive, which will alleviate congestion. Oftentimes, on Saturdays, some evenings, the backup is almost out onto the street, and so this will alleviate that. They're also expanding the square footage of their showroom by taking current administrative space, accommodating more personnel needed in the sales department because they are doing so well at this location. They're also expanding on the second floor, so somewhere to move those administrative and digital-facing employees, meeting rooms, et cetera, on the second floor. And then they are building for the future. As you can see in the picture, they have an EV, Honda EV there, that they are accommodating the sales and service of battery electric vehicles in this expansion. So just a quick reminder that sales tax sharing agreements are very common with car dealers in the Chicago metro area. In 2016, CMAP did a study and found there were 127 sales tax sharing agreements with car dealerships throughout the region. These agreements are considered some of the safest incentives to give because the city is guaranteed not only our normal amount of sales tax, but additional sales tax through the sales tax sharing agreement. So we both share in success. Just a quick history here. We've done sales tax rebate agreements all the way back to 1992, all the way through the Hyundai Genesis and Hyundai Napleton deals. One note, if you see Valley Honda with the asterisk there, the 2007, the council did approve a sales tax agreement then. However, due to the recession, the project was not completed. I believe it was to be a customer garage nearby, and they decided not to build that garage, so there was no COA funding expended. So we also researched other communities, recent examples, and this proposal is keeping with most of those agreements in terms of dollar amount, percentages, and term. Please note also, this is the same basic terms that we agreed to with Napleton. So clearly, as you can see on the next slide, there is a long history in the region of competition. We're certainly very grateful that now we seem to have back along the corridor, car dealers. Even the car dealers along New York Street have upped their game. They have remodeled, and now with the area in and around Valley Honda and the two Napletons, we seem to have our car-selling groove back a bit, and we're very happy that they are staying in Aurora. The other examples here, you see there's a variety of years, variety of percentages. And so using that and using the Napleton example, we were able to reach a deal with Valley. And so Mr. Minnick is going to go into the actual details of the proposed terms, and then Mr. Williams is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer for the city. As Mr. Alexander mentioned, the salient agreement terms from a financial perspective are predicated on the Hyundai Genesis example that was entered into, I believe, in 2022, and just simply updated and reflective of the project scope and the salient sales tax generation and things of that nature at Valley Honda. So the project cost is estimated at 17, almost $17.6 million. That is a little bit more than the Hyundai Genesis combined project was. The term is currently proposed at 15 years of maximum reimbursement. The reimbursement does contemplate that the reimbursement cap would be reached somewhere in the 12th to 13th year, assuming that projections are met. Sales tax distribution, this is a very key provision, and it was a very key provision that staff was able to negotiate into the agreement. There is a sales tax floor, meaning that the first $1,050,000 of sales taxes generated that would come to the city stay with the city. So in other words, we don't start a split of any sales tax until we get to $1,050,001. After we hit that point, the sales tax distribution is 65% to Valley Honda, 35% to the city. At the initial proposal of the agreement, there At the initial proposal of the agreement, there was no sales tax floor that was included. Staff did, was successful in negotiating that and getting that into the agreement. Taxes eligible for rebate, one percent state sales tax that comes to the city related to vehicle sales. Each vehicle sale within the city generates one percent of the sales price for, for sales taxes. And then on parts and miscellaneous merchandise, the two point two five percent state sales tax, as well as the home rule sales tax, does apply to the, to the sales tax incentive, incentive split. It's important to note that home rule sales taxes do not apply to the sales of titled vehicles. That's the reason for the difference in those two, in those two categories. And there is a maximum reimbursement cap, this is also predicated on the Hyundai Genesis dealership. The reimbursement cap is limited to Valley Honda collecting twelve million, eight hundred thousand dollars over that maximum fifteen-year period. Once that reimbursement cap is, is reached, the, the agreement then, then terminates and all of this, one hundred percent of the sales tax then reverts to the city. Then, just so that the council could get aware, or get, get an awareness of what the sales tax terms and the financial terms look like and how that plays out in terms of actual sales tax generation, I put together this chart that at the bottom shows various scenarios of municipal sales taxes that would be generated at the Valley Honda dealership, and then what amount of those sales taxes would come to the city vis-à-vis what amount would be rebated back to Valley Honda. So you can see, as we mentioned, in the, in the first two lines, there's a million and fifty thousand dollar sales tax floor. So in both of those examples where municipal taxes generated would be seven hundred and fifty thousand or one million dollars, the city would retain all of those dollars, and Valley Honda would not get to take advantage of the, of the sales tax sharing agreement. If you look a little bit further down, if there are two million dollars in sales taxes, in municipal sales taxes that are generated at the Honda dealership, then because of the floor and the split of those sales taxes, one million, three hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars would remain with the city, and Valley Honda would enjoy a rebate of six hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. So still nearly a two-thirds, one-third split when you take a look in favor of the city at that point, when you take a look at the sales tax generation. So, and you can see the, the remainder of the scenarios there, be happy to go over them or answer any questions. But with that, I believe we are...
Can I have Mr. Williams?
I do have a question, may, may I ask? Yes, so the petitioner would please share with us what the situation would be for Valley Honda if the city does not participate in this sales tax agreement, if you could help, help us understand that as well.
Well, thank you, Alderman Smith. Rick Williams, attorney for Valley Honda with me is our CEO, Casey Brentley. If you own a Honda and you've been at the site, you know that we are busting at the seams. This site is used to the maximum capacity. In fact, we have eleven hundred parking spaces off-site where we bring cars to and from. And in order to make the improvements that we need to make this site viable for us in the long term, we need assistance from the city. You know, Valley Honda's been here in the city of Aurora for fifty years. We haven't left, we've always been here, we want to stay here, that's why we're here today. We want to continue to call Aurora home for the next fifty years. And another key thing that I want to bring up about Valley Honda versus other car dealerships in Aurora is we are one hundred percent employee-owned. We have two hundred and twenty employees, a hundred and two of them are Aurora residents. And every single employee owns a share in Rousch Holdings, which is a holding company for this entity. And every year, Valley Honda contributes twenty-three percent of each employee's compensation towards the acquisition of shares. So while we're a profitable dealership, we have the liability to our employees to pay them when they retire. And some of our employees retire with quite an estee. So it's, our access to capital isn't as great as a private dealership. We, of course, we have access to capital, but we have internal controls that we have to meet to satisfy our IRS regulation. So that's kind of a long-winded answer, Alderman Smith, but that's why we're here today.
Alderman Bug, I'm sorry, Alderman Lesch.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Private question for Honda themselves, so the attorney, just if it's a fifteen-year look at a, at a minimum fifteen-year expansion, what is your plan to bring hydrogen-fuel cell vehicles to the Fox Valley area? I know they haven't quite hit the shores of the U.S. yet, but just curious if you're thinking ahead with this expansion.
Sure, that's a great question. I'm Casey Brentley, I'm honored to serve as president, CEO and dealer principal at Valley Honda. And we are one hundred percent employee-owned company. We have a Honda dealership in Ohio also. We only have our two Honda dealerships, it's all that we focus on and our four hundred and fifty employee owners. We do everything we can to partner with Honda as best we can. Honda Motor Company has a couple of opportunities with some future development, but we can only sell what, what they will send us. And that'll be regulated by state city guidelines. Right now, we have one all-electric vehicle, the Honda Prologue, and we were, you know, first in on getting the EV charging stations, which we greatly appreciated the approval to get done. And we're right now in the top ten in the country in overall sales. And we're also the top Midwest dealer for the all-electric vehicle. Valley Honda is the top seller for Honda in the Midwest, the, the all-electric vehicle. If that vehicle comes to market, we'll do everything to make sure that we can sell and service it properly. And, and based on our history with the electric vehicles, I'm sure that we'll do very well with the vehicle.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Thank you. A question for Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
We did the comparables with some of the cities, however, we did not do comparables, or did not show comparables in the slides with our neighbors to the east. As we all know, they have numerous car dealerships within a mile or two of this dealership. So please talk to us about the sharing agreement with, that they have with their dealerships.
They called him about Trevor Dick, Assistant Director of Economic Development. I was looking for Russ Whitaker to see if he's still here, because I know he represents Naperville a lot. I don't believe that Naperville offers any incentive programs.
And in your infinite wisdom, why would you say that is?
Well, I think the benefit that Naperville has is they did provide, it wasn't really a dollar incentive, but they created that test track that used to be that rail yard, if you recall, in between the dealerships. The other thing that Naperville has going for them is the most dealerships in a specific area. And as we all know, dealers love to be in the same area together, and so together, just having that mass of different dealerships in that area has been an incentive enough for them to be in Naperville. Those are, I think, are the two examples that come to my mind, Alderman.
Okay, I appreciate that. We all know, we all drive, thirty-four and fifty-nine, I believe, is our busiest intersection in the city. It's literally a quarter of a mile from the border. So I definitely appreciate what Valley Honda has done over the years as being a customer numerous times. Actually, it's the only place I shop, but definitely, I appreciate the, going back to the nineties, starting these. But I definitely think in the future, we're going to be looking to, you know, going toward a model that there is less sharing. Valley Honda is a great company, great, fantastic, I have friends who work there. So, but the model from the nineties to two thousands to today, and I'm not saying our neighbors to the east are perfect, they certainly are not. But I believe that that's the way we're going to go toward in the future. I'll be voting yes, but we know where we're headed, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Barrow.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that I know it's hard to, to accept these types of incentives, but just looking back historically, growing up in Aurora, I remember the, the car dealerships we had on Farnsworth, on Lake Street, on New York Street, and we lost those to, to our neighbors to the east, our neighbors to the north. And, you know, it's, it's a, you know, right thing to do to keep these in, in Aurora, and they, they do generate and contribute to our tax base here, so I'm, I'm in favor of this, thank you.
Alderman Bug.
No, I'm good.
I'm sorry, Alderman Lesch.
Thanks, I'm gonna, if it's okay, I have a few more follow-up questions, I'm gonna leave it on consent, but just a few follow-up that I'll send to management, if that's all right.
So no objections, I'm going to consent.
Can I make one comment before?
Alderman Franco.
So again, when we talk about incentives, we talk about investments, I don't think anybody always wants to give incentives, but we are competing again with a surrounding area, a significant surrounding area in the Chicago suburbs. So when you compete and you want to get business because it's going to grow your city, sometimes you do incentives, sometimes you do investments to get big money. So I don't think this is anything different than being in the game and competing with all these towns that have everything going for it and making sure we come out on top. So I just want to mention that, because we do this a lot, but we do it for a reason. And as we saw with our restaurants, we had a plan that at some point in time, those incentives are going to get less and less, and they are. So the plan that we have is, is the path that we're going forward works, so this is going to be no different. At some point in time, if we get to the Naperville thing, like you said, and we have more, maybe that bunching will help us. But right now, we're competing, and we got to know what we're competing against, and we have to get in the game, and this is how we're going to do it. So I think that mindset going forward is who we are and what we're going to continue to do. With that said, let's go to the last item.
Consent.
Can I say one thing before you move on?
Alderman Smith.
Yes, so I just want to add too, I don't disagree with what Alderman Bug said, and I agree with, with both Alderman Barrow and Alderman Franco said. I've experienced Honda for thirty-plus years, because I've always had a Honda, probably thirty-six years. And if you were to go to this particular Honda dealership, you would see that they are busting at the seams. And if we don't provide them with some assistance and do something semi-equal to what we've done to their neighbors, I could say that, you know, Valley Honda would be looking for more land to move somewhere else because they're growing, and we can't allow them to leave Naperville, or excuse me, Aurora, because they have provided, they're such good business partners to our city. So I think we need to be a little bit careful here in, you know, yeah, we don't want to do incentives, I understand that, we need to, you know, eventually get to that point. But we also need to know that these businesses have other options, and we want to be, we want to be their option, so I will be voting in favor of this.
Alderman Seville.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, Dan, Alderman Barrow is correct in his synopsis of the former dealerships that we used to have in Aurora and give you an example of, we tried to get the, the auto mall that's now in North Aurora. In fact, we had an agreement with them to come to our side of Orchard, south of I-88. And after we, we thought we had agreed and with them to locate the auto mall there, they proceeded to go to North Aurora and say, this is what Aurora is offering, can you do better? And ultimately, that's what exactly happened, and we lost them. And they're doing marvelous there, and we do not have an auto mall on our side of the border. So we have to be very selective in what we do and making sure that we have that type of dealerships and revenue coming into our city.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Consent.
Last one, two five dash zero two nine one, resolution authorizing execution of a labor agreement between the city of Aurora and Association of Professional Police Officers from one one twenty twenty-five through twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-eight. This four-year contract includes a four percent increase for the first three years and a three point five percent increase in last year. It also includes, includes an increase in health insurance premiums for the participants and some longevity incentives.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
And Mr. Mayor, that concludes the finance committee report.
Thank you very much, let's go on to Chairman Seville, can you give the Public Health, Safety and Transportation Committee a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The PHSOT committee met on April eighth, twenty twenty-five, and reviewed the filing items. Twenty-five dash zero one two seven, a resolution proving estimated payments not to exceed one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to suburban law enforcement can be for police recruit training in twenty twenty-five. This allows us to send twenty-two police officers for training this year in twenty twenty-five. This agency does meet our standards, and we're expending about five thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents per recruit to be make sure that they're indeed trained according to our standards.
Consent.
Going, consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Twenty-five dash zero two four three, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class D Fox Valley Mall Entertainment District onsite consumption. Liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from Foodiva LLC, DBA Baywarchi Birriani's at forty-two fifty Fox Valley Center Drive in Aurora, Ward ten. This has been in business for three years here, and they're asking for a Class D.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
The next item is twenty-five dash zero two six eight, a resolution to approve a rental agreement with East Aurora School District, one thirty-one, for the city of Aurora's Youth Services Division. This is the soccer field that we have, and this is the first time we're moving it to a school. We've got two schools lined up, both Rollins and Dietrich, and they would have this during a two-week period.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent. I'm sorry, Alderman Bug.
Thank you. It just come up, you knew the question was coming, so. So. Yeah, well, something's wrong with the microphones, I don't know. I don't know, they, they keep going on and off, anyway. So I, I know you're working hard, Simon, I know you are. We're negotiating with two oh four to have some sites there. Tell me something about negotiating with three oh eight and what's, what's going to happen.
Yes, so again, last year, just really quickly, Simon Rodriguez, Youth Services Manager, both East and West, you know, agreed to housing our soccer field. So we've had initial conversations with Dishar to further looking over our proposal. And right now with Swiga, as you know, they have only limited amount of sites that are located physically in Aurora, so we have to look at that first to see if they have the availability, but we'd love to explore that option as well.
Okay. The site in that area, and I'm going to speak for my fellow colleague, actually was in Ward nine, but actually is now Ward three. There's a huge, huge site in Kendall County, there's nothing there that would be with the Aspiga Land Park District, so.
This is, this is a Swiga Park District, you said?
Swiga Land Park District, you talked to Alderman Mesiacos about that. A huge, huge park with nothing there.
We'd love to explore options of getting the soccer field to every location possible. So this is kind of our first start going to non-city of Aurora sites. So we absolutely would love to have the conversation with other entities to, to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Okay.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
The next item is twenty-five dash zero two six nine, and this is a resolution to approve a rental agreement with the rest of Aurora School District, one twenty-one, five, I'm sorry, one twenty-nine, for the city of Aurora's Youth Services Division, this is for two schools, Greenman and Smith Schools.
Consent.
This has been the second location.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
The next item is twenty-five dash zero two seven seven, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class D Fox Valley Mall Entertainment District onsite consumption liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from Catherine's Place at thirteen hundred Fox Valley Center Drive in Aurora. They have five thousand square, square feet of space, they, they will be having with the bar, they offer items for, for consumption like pizza, briskets, chicken, pepperoni, health foods like Kai Bowls.
Consent.
And they're also going to be having comedy stand-up.
Wow, consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Okay, twenty-five dash zero two seven eight, resolution authorizing the director purchasing or their designee to execute a service or their designee to execute a service agreement with Oxcart Permit Systems LLC for the creation and processing of online overweight and oversized commercial motor vehicle permit applications. This allows us to have the online software that we need for these overweight and oversized vehicles to make sure that they use appropriate roadways and they have the correct route.
No objections, I don't stand on consent.
And that's the report from PHS and Team Mayor.
Thank you very much. Chairwoman Garza, can you give the Infrastructure and Technology Committee report, please?
Yes, Mayor. We met in April 7, and the first item, the given is twenty-five dash zero two two one, a resolution to award the 2025 man host rehabilitation to National Power Road Inc. in the bid amount of $391,272.
Consent.
No objections, I don't stand on consent.
Twenty-five dash oh two four two, a resolution awarding the bid to Service Sanitation Inc. located in Aurora, Illinois for a portable toilet rental service for various city of Aurora divisions.
Consent.
No objections, I don't stand on consent.
Twenty-five dash zero two six zero, a resolution authorizing Crawford Morphine Tile to provide professional engineering services for the water production division for the new water well construction project in the amount not to exceed $195,990.
Consent.
No objections, I don't stand on consent.
Twenty-five dash zero two six two, a resolution authorizing Engineering Enterprises Inc. to provide professional engineering services for the Stew's Road Elevated Water Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project for the Water Production Division, not to exceed amount of $206,149.
Consent.
No objections, I don't stand on consent.
Twenty-five dash zero two seven one, a resolution to award the Chapman Road Cycle Water Main Improvement Project located in Ward 5 to the Millard Pipeline LLC in the amount of $721,605.0.
Consent.
No objections, I don't stand on consent.
Twenty-five dash zero two seven three, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to execute a contract with Rubino Engineering in the amount of $67,055 for material testing at Riverage Park.
Consent.
No objections, I don't stand on consent.
And we conclude the meeting, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Chairman Warman, can you give the Rules Administration and Procedure Committee report, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rules Administration and Procedures Committee was scheduled to meet on April 1, 2025. However, there were no items on the agenda, so this meeting was canceled.
Thank you very much. That concludes committee reports. Let's go on to Old Business. Madam Clerk, can you read the first item under Old Business?
Twenty-five zero two zero nine, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for a gas station with separate diesel lanes, truck stop establishments, twenty-eight forty-one on the property located at the southeast corner of Iola Road and Deal Road.
Consent.
I expect there are going to be questions on this, Alderman. Alderman Lash, do you have a question?
Sure. I guess there are problems, so please. Yeah, I can't turn my mic off. Does that work? Okay. So I did both talk to the petitioner, planning and zoning, and legal, and it's my understanding that we're going to be able to craft some language to provide a provision for when this site closes down, the removal of the storage tanks and proper demolition of that site. So I don't know if other council members have questions on the items, the next two, but I'd like to at least put it on unfinished and work on that language, still moving it on to the next level.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Alderman Bate, and then I'll come back to Alderman Franco.
Can we please have a quick presentation? They've added some slides to the presentation, and it'd be nice.
Mr. Seaven.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Ed Seaven, Planning and Zoning Director. As Alderman Lash said, we did meet with Alderman Lash, Alderman Bug today, myself, Tracy Bryant, so we had a very good, very good conversation on that today. We, we've also been working with the petitioner, so they have some additional slides they wanted to go over with some of the issues that were brought up, some environmental issues, some economic issues. Before we get into that, I just wanted to state three things real quick. So again, there's some misrepresentation that this is a truck stop, as people think of a truck stop. It's really a gas station that has additional diesel lanes in the back. This site, back in 2010, when it was annexed and zoned by the City Council, it did allow for a gas station, so it's just the diesel, additional diesel lanes that require the conditional use that we're here for now. And so, and I also want to give credit to the Aurora Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission is made up of nine citizens that represent different geographic areas throughout the city, and they do hold the public hearing. And as a result of the public hearing and their recommendation, they did recommend approval of the conditional use, and more importantly, there are six findings of fact that they have to go over legally to approve a conditional use, and they did go through those and approve those unanimously. So I just wanted to state that. So with that being said, I believe the petitioner does have an updated presentation.
Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to present. I will go ahead and scoot to the new slides that we updated. Most of these will be the older slides that were presented last time, so I'll just go to the newer ones and just explain a little bit more of some of the questions that arise. For environmental, there were concerns on how we handle different situations and they arise, or how do we operate? We do have a spill contamination prevention. We have underground storage tanks with loading. Our tanks are all double-walled fuel tanks. We have a third-party onsite installation inspection, so if whatever the tanks are being fueled by the trucker, they are required to stay next to the, to the tanks where they're fueling up at all times. They cannot be further than 10 feet away from it, just in case if any emergencies do arise, they're there to prevent that from happening. We do have multiple sensors in our tanks as well. We have actually floating sensors, that's not very common in the industry, that we have in our tanks. That's if any amount of fuel that could be predicted that, hey, there might be something going on here, maybe it's just a faulty sensor. We have a environmental consultant, which is Warren Rogers, who we work with. They see all this data, it's real-time data, it's not an hour later, a few hours later, it's real-time data, they get to see this. Again, we go above and beyond in our sensors. Most of the industry do not use double-walled tanks. We do do that, we use the, we use the double-walled tanks on there. A couple other things that we do use is 24-hour monitoring system, pressurized line leak detector or PLLD, underground storage tank leak detection, flow rate and dormant dispenser detection, delivery audits, and which all result in real-time data that our third-party consultants get to see. Moving on to the next new slide is the tax generation and incentive that of us, our development coming here to the City of Aurora, which we're excited about and being a part of the city, providing an opportunity for the citizens to be a part of a great company. Just to touch a little bit on that, you know, we provide amazing salaries for our employees. We, we also provide tuition reimbursement for college, for anybody wanting to go to college. We also have a tuition program where if you're a current employee of the company, your kid that's going to college could also apply for a tuition reimbursement scholarships as well. So we, we really care about the community that we're in, we want to be a part of it. We're not just here just to offer our business and leave, we want to be a part of the community, we want to grow together and really show who we are as a company, being a part of the community. With that, on the screen, as you can see, is the projected yearly tax. So on the property tax, which will be, as it says on the city only, this will be for the Aurora District Library and 1.673% that the City of Aurora will get. That will be $45,871. Diesel will be $41,600. Gasoline, the tax, the 4% or the 4 cents per gallon will be $156,000. Sales tax of $171,000, and food and beverage tax of 23, which makes a total of 47, $437,692. The current site, as it sits right now, it provides the city with $5,943.44, which a total increase of $431,748.56. So it's a benefit to the, to the community we're, we're able to provide with this development. Again, we're excited to be in part of the community, we want to be a team member of the community, we want to provide, we want to give the citizens an opportunity to shop with us and also work for us. So that's, that's just the two sides that have been updated since last meeting. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Alderman Smith.
Will you just revisit the traffic study again? I think it's the slide before, there was some question about the traffic study today.
Correct. Oh, yes, there were some concerns about the traffic on I-88 and in the increase of traffic. So we will not have a presence on Illinois I-88, we won't have a high-rise sign, so those customers are not going to be exiting because they see a QuickTrip sign. Though, to add to that, the traffic study has been approved by DuPage County and the City of Aurora, so we do have a traffic study that's been submitted to authorities having jurisdiction that approved this traffic study of ours. Well, we believe that the people that are driving on I-88, we're a traffic capture, not a generator. So anybody that's going to exit off I-88, that's going to come to our site, they're already planning to exit off I-88. We're not taking them off I-88 to bring them to our site. Otherwise, they won't see us. We don't, again, like I said, we won't have presence, there's no trailblazers on I-88. Trailblazers are your blue signs that I dot permits that has a QuickTrip logo or a fast-food logo directing you where to go. So we, there's not any of that, so we will not, we don't believe that the traffic of I-88 will be all consumed to our development.
Staff. Go ahead, brother.
Brian Witkowski, new development engineer. Just to give some quick stats from the traffic study, essentially, this site will have 4,400 trips, and 75% of those are existing trips to the site already. So there's going to be 1,100 new trips, and a trip is essentially coming in and leaving the site, so essentially one car. So 550 new cars will be generated by this site on an average day, and then at the, for the peak hour, it's around 10% of those trips, so it will be essentially one, one new car per minute. So this is negligible new traffic in this area.
Alderman Bate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just want to confirm, no truck idling and no overnight truck parking here at this location?
That is correct.
And no signage on I-88?
No signage on I-88.
And you already went over the current tax generated by the site and the proposed development tax, whatever will be generated, so thank you for that. And I also wanted to say thank you to Tracy and Ed, they answered my questions before the meeting, and also Zach for providing all the information before the meeting. Entrance and exit, there are two entrances and one exit, right?
There's, so there'll be three entrances and two exits.
Three entrances?
Yeah, so there will be a write-in only on Iola.
And exit only on Deal.
There's going to be one full access on Deal and one.
Correct.
On Deal.
Okay. And just one quick question about the sound. So some of the residents thought it will have more noise pollution in the area, can you please go over that?
So like I said, with, there's going to be minimal new traffic generated by this site. Like, we would totally agree with the statement that they made, that this is, this is a traffic capture. The majority of the vehicles utilizing the site is traffic that is already going by this site, like I said, and during the peak hour, there's going to be one additional car per minute. So noise increase, I would say, as well as traffic increase would be negligible for this site.
And was this location always zoned to be a gas station, or we are changing something?
I believe Ed noted that earlier, that this was, this was originally zoned to be a gas station.
Okay. And how many people will be employed at this location, and are you planning to hire locally?
Yes, yeah, so we definitely do hire locally. Now, for amount of employment we have, this store will generate between six to seven full-time employees and between 12 to 15 part-time.
And for construction process, are you going to hire local people?
For the construction process, we, we work with various GCs around the area. Now, it might be, they're, maybe they have an office that's local, maybe they're nationwide. I'm not totally sure. That is a, we go through a bidding process with that, and to be honest, I don't get that say-so of who gets that bid.
And the last one is jack braking on I-88. One of the resident brought that issue, like, can you go over that?
If I may, John Philip Chuck, I'm the attorney representing QuickTrip, and to point that out, your typical situation with the jack braking, a truck's trying to reduce their speed sooner than later, okay? And so what happens is they usually do it on roads that are higher speeds, and they use that to help brake them. Deal's only a 40 mile an hour limit, and Iola Road is a 45 mile an hour limit. So would they absolutely say that nobody will ever do it? We can't, but some municipalities post signs with regard to jack braking and make it a violation. That's certainly something that you could consider, but I, I have seen in my experience, it's usually the higher-speed roads that the trucks have to bring it down sooner and quicker, and as a result, they sometimes do the jack braking, which is the thing that makes the noise, really. So I don't anticipate that being an issue here because of the speed limits on the road. We have a fine Aurora Police Department that catches this, I'll tell you that.
I have one more question. So we heard about the parking of trucks. Is there a dedicated parking spot for trucks if they want to grab some food from inside? Where do they park?
So if a trucker wants to grab food, either he could do, whenever he's done fueling, he could pull up to a stop bar and grab, grab his food and then get out and head on the road.
But that stop bar is not a parking for hours.
That is not, no, because you, if there's a trucker behind him, he's fueling up, so it takes about 10 minutes, 15 minutes to fuel up, and then it will be, he can't block another trucker from leaving.
And thank you for adding provision for EV in future, some dedicated spots, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Yes, that's a good point. I did not hit on that. We are dedicating two parking spots, as you can see with the arrow at the southwest corner of our property.
Did you have a question?
Sir.
All right, any other questions, comments on this item?
If we could leave it on unfinished, just to work on the, the language on the amendment.
Thank you. Next item.
Twenty-five zero two one zero, resolution approving a revision to the preliminary plan and plat for property located at southeast corner of Iola Road and Deal Road.
Unfinished. Put this unfinished with the other one, so we're going to address the language issues. All right, that concludes old business. Let's go on to new business. Madam Clerk, can you read the first item under new business?
Twenty-five zero three zero seven, a resolution approving the appointment of Stephen A. Stemmott as Deputy Police Chief.
Consent.
No objections, I don't stand on consent.
Twenty-five zero three zero eight, a resolution approving the appointment of Matthew T. Thomas as Police Chief.
Consent.
No objections. Unfinished. Next item, I believe this next item is going to be held. Am I correct, Ms. Voight?
No, yes.
This was held at Raff today.
Was that, was this held, was this held, twenty-five dash zero three one six, resolution?
That's correct. We'll be holding that one, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, read the next item.
Twenty-five zero three one nine, an ordinance amending. Twenty-five zero-three-one-nine, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-seven, specifically section twenty-seven dash one-seven-six, parking commercial vehicles, trailers, truck trailers, and truck tractors in residential districts.
There's someone from APD that has a presentation.
Good evening.
Wow.
Sir, I'm Officer Grant Wild with the Aurora Police Department. I'm currently assigned to our community-oriented policing unit, Police District fourteen, which falls within the tenth ward of the city. We've prepared a brief presentation for you tonight regarding an amendment to ordinance twenty-seven-one-seven-six regarding commercial vehicle parking. The Aurora Police Department consistently fields hundreds of parking complaints each year. Many of these complaints involve commercial vehicles that often cause safety concerns for both motorists and pedestrians alike. The community-oriented policing unit is tasked with identifying issues, often quality-of-life concerns addressed by Aurora residents, and finding long-term solutions to these issues. Commercial vehicle parking complaints have been consistently reported to officers in all areas and police districts throughout the city. This presentation provides a brief overview of the current ordinance pertaining to commercial vehicles, examples of the status of commercial vehicle parking, as well as a proposed amendment to ordinance twenty-seven dash one-seven-six. We believe these proposed changes will have a significant positive impact to quality of life for all residents in the City of Aurora without impacting the normal operation of Aurora businesses. So this is twenty-seven-one-seven-six as it currently reads. No commercial vehicle or truck tractor, with or without a trailer, exceeding two tons in weight according to vehicle registration, or any type of trailer regardless if the trailer or semi-trailer is attached to another vehicle, shall be permitted to park on any public street in a residential district between the hours of ten PM and seven AM, for a period longer than two hours between the hours of seven AM and ten PM, or in a manner to obstruct other vehicular traffic or cause a hazard. Note that the current ordinance provides a definition for a trailer and a commercial vehicle. The current ordinance also provides the Police Department with the authority to remove vehicles in violation of the ordinance, however, this only pertains to residential districts. The following slides are a few brief examples of commercial vehicle parking issues that community-oriented policing officers have addressed or are currently still addressing. First is Duke Parkway, the south section. Parking concerns on Duke Parkway were first brought to the Aurora Police Department's attention in early two thousand twenty-four. Several local businesses contacted the COP unit describing safety concerns created by semi-trucks parked on both sides of the roadway, causing serious visibility concerns for drivers attempting to navigate through the street and onto private lots for legitimate business deliveries. Many of these vehicles parking on the street are registered to businesses located outside the City of Aurora and do not have any business with any of the properties in the Duke Parkway Business Park. I've personally spoken with some of these drivers who admit they park these vehicles on Aurora streets before driving their personal vehicles home, which are often not in Aurora because they are aware the city does nothing to enforce commercial vehicle parking in these areas. The City of Aurora is currently effectively providing free parking for commercial businesses and their large commercial vehicles on city streets. COP began working with the City of Aurora Engineering to address the issue. After lengthy traffic surveys were completed, utilities were marked, and additional signage finally approved, the police to, police department began to see an improvement in the area. Drivers were beginning to adhere to the signage, however, they quickly realized they could legally park these same vehicles on the adjacent side of the street, and the same problems began once again. Excessive amounts of trash, including human waste, were left behind by drivers. Oil changes were being done and discarded into the street. Several stolen vehicles have been recovered here. An excessive noise from idling trucks, particularly during overnight hours, still affected both area residents and businesses alike. The north section of Duke Parkway, nearby Warrenville residents living along the north side of Duke Parkway have expressed similar concerns to the Aurora Police Department. Like managers of the businesses in the Duke Parkway area, these residents also had expressed safety concerns when exiting their neighborhood onto Aurora streets, as semis parking close to the subdivision entrance blocked the line of sight for drivers to safely enter the roadway without first fully entering the intersection to see past these parked semis. Additional signage was approved and installed on the north end of Duke Parkway. As of now, the signage has proven to be effective, however, the process took over one year to complete before any meaningful change took place in this portion of the roadway. The same problems still occur on the south end of Duke Parkway, where signage has not yet been installed. Gabrielle Lane over by the U.S. Post Office facility. Commercial vehicle parking concerns on Gabrielle Lane have been reported to District Ten COP officers for the past year. Area residents often park their company vehicles on the street, making navigating around them difficult for drivers of passenger vehicles and commercial vehicles alike. Not only do they pose safety concerns over motorists' visibility, but they also diminish the visual appeal and aesthetic quality of the residential area. Over time, this could even lead to decreased property values or interest by potential owners Similarly, Long Meadow Drive experiences a high number of commercial vehicles parking in an area that has a large multifamily housing complex adjacent to it. Even with signage posted, Aurora Police Officers are only authorized to ticket these vehicles and tow them, if not removed, within forty-eight hours. Note that there's a high number of pedestrians in that area due to the residential complex, including children playing throughout the area. Due to the challenges of consistent commercial vehicle parking enforcement previously mentioned, the Aurora Police Department is suggesting the following amendment to the existing ordinance regarding commercial vehicle parking in residential districts. We propose removing language that limits the ordinance to only residential districts. By doing so, this will allow for more effective, consistent commercial vehicle parking enforcement throughout the city, including in areas zoned as both residential and commercial, which often can be immediately adjacent to each other, causing confusion and frustration by Aurora residents. Note that the proposed changes are consistent with current language used by state statutes, such as changing tons to pounds, and accounts for other situations involving large commercial vehicles that are both loaded, unloaded, excuse me, as well as with or without registration plates attached to it. The same prohibition on overnight parking in residential districts would be extended to commercial districts between the hours of ten PM and seven AM. During the day, commercial vehicles are still able to operate and make deliveries to facilities without issue, as they are afforded the same two-hour window as currently prescribed by our ordinance. The purpose of the proposed amendment is not to hinder business in the City of Aurora. Instead, note that the language has also been added to ensure that commercial vehicles actively making deliveries or providing a service are not affected. Lastly, the authority to immediately remove vehicles found in violation of this ordinance will have a significant positive impact on the responsiveness and ability for the Aurora Police Department to address frequent complaints of commercial vehicles parking on city streets. The proposed amendment to the ordinance will benefit Aurora residents and businesses alike by allowing consistent standards to be applied throughout the city. The lengthy process of conducting traffic surveys, engineering surveys, utility markings, and eventual signage installation would not be necessary if an ordinance applied to all districts throughout the city. The proposed amendment is consistent with the approaches taken by neighboring jurisdictions. The City Legal Department carefully considered standards set by other municipalities to suggest language that mirrors those cities' intent in regulating their commercial vehicle parking. As previously mentioned, the language used in our current ordinance is sufficient in regulating commercial vehicle parking in residential districts. However, given current, consistent complaints, the Aurora Police Department feels that applying this ordinance to all districts will alleviate concerns raised by area residents and business It is also important to note that the proposed amendment to our current ordinance does not have any impact on Aurora residents' ability to park personal, non-commercial vehicles on city streets in any type of district, including during overnight hours. To the contrary, restricting commercial vehicles parking on city streets creates additional parking for area residents. This amendment would address Aurora residents' frequent quality-of-life concerns over excessive noise, discarded trash, and air pollution created by large commercial vehicles. Lastly, the safety of everyone visiting, living in, or working in Aurora is our number-one priority. Limited visibility around large commercial vehicles can obstruct the view of motorists, cyclists, and pedestrians alike, increasing the chances of a serious traffic crash. As witnessed on Duke Parkway, for example, parked commercial vehicles can limit the space for others to safely navigate through the area, creating dangerous bottleneck situations that cause unnecessary congestion and delay to area business deliveries. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to implementing this simple, yet effective change to our municipal code.
Questions? Alderman Bate.
Thank you for updating this ordinance. I have complained about Meridian Parkway, Duke Parkway, and Gabriel Lane constantly, and thank you for addressing this, and I hope the random dumping of truck tires will also stop with this, so thank you once again. Can you please share with, share this presentation with us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the, the one concern I have currently, this is enforced, you know, that the idea of trailers and residuals is enforced by property standards, correct?
The Police Department can also enforce that.
Can they also? And, and then I guess my one question is, what, I understand the intent and the problem, but what about that person who goes out for an afternoon boating trip, pulls up along the curb, you know, buddy's house, they're there for a couple hours, and the ordinance says immediate removal? How do we handle that situation?
Are you referring to like a recreational vehicle? Because that would be under a separate ordinance.
Sure. Well, it does say trailer, as defined by, but not including, to include watercraft, trailers, utility trailers, travel trailers, truck campers, camping trailers, landscape trailers, vehicle transport trailers. So it's pretty inclusive to include, like a boat trailer, or, or your in-laws come in with a trailer and don't park in the driveway, they pull up along the curb.
So you're still afforded that two-hour window during the day. That, that doesn't change this. This, this ordinance is specifically targeting those larger commercial trucks, so it's not looking at, you know, your typical half-ton, like an F-150, or a boat, or anything that's temporarily parked there. This is addressing large commercial vehicles.
Okay, well, it does say any motor vehicle attached to a trailer, and then it defines trailers.
I think I would have to refer that to the legal department, I'm not sure what.
So at the line twenty-four, or twenty-three, twenty-four, designed for carrying persons or property and for being drawn by a motor vehicle, including but not limited to every vehicle without motive, power, and operation. Are you suggesting that to, to make sure that we're not targeting residents? I mean, I, I think most neighborhoods don't want to have a big RV parked on the street anyway, right? It's just, are we going to tow it within a matter of two hours?
No, and, and that's, again, and that's addressed by a different city ordinance, that does not pertain to this.
And just out of curiosity for legal, do you think there's a need to change just the description of the, the vehicle, motor vehicle in that line twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three there?
Alderman, I can take a look at it over the course of the next week. Generally, though, officers are not necessarily looking, or the Police Department is not looking to tow unnecessarily. So if it were the situation as you, as was described in the example, that would not be, even if they had the legal authority to do it, that would not ordinarily be a good use of their resources to do. If you do have a similar situation where it's been that same vehicle parked in front of that same house over a longer period of time, then the equation changes a bit. But there is some discretion that the officers have when they're going to exercise that authority to tow. We can try to legislate it and pin that legis, that discretion down, but then that potentially creates, you know, other issues. So allowing for some flexibility and for some ability for somebody to call the Police Department and say, my in-laws are here, they brought their trailer from Kansas, it's going to be out in front of my house for two days, can you avoid towing it? That's the type of thing that I think we can set up at a Police Department and handle at an administrative level that doesn't necessarily need to be reduced to the code.
Or direct it to property standards and write a, write a violation, a warning, that's another effective way to do it.
Exactly. So there's, there's a couple different ways to deal with that issue that don't necessarily require changing other sections of the code. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mayor. About the, the people doing landscaping, what is specific there? Sometimes they leave, yes, the trailer in the street, there's no motor, so they leave the trailer, they want, they want to continue the same, like in the past.
So the trailers are not allowed to be parked there?
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, because some people, they do. A lot in the neighborhoods. So I'm glad. They want a ticket, or they want to tow it.
So we, we, as the Alderman pointed out, I mean, we tow vehicles as a last resort. We, just from my personal experience, we always try to find the owner of that vehicle before it's towed. We, we're not trying to remove people's vehicles unless we absolutely have to, so we do try to make contact with them first.
Yeah, except in my opinion, if they have their own business, they have to have their own yard to park, not in, park in the streets. Kind of dangerous sometimes to leave, to leave just like that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, is this, is this consent? All right, no objections. Item gone, consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Officer. All right, next item, Madam Clerk. Actually, that concludes new business. That takes us on to the Alderman's Corner. We're going to do Alderman Bill Denell, the fourth ward. This will be his last Alderman's Corner. So go right ahead, brother, you got the steering wheel.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to start out by thanking our Aldermanic aide, Mason Brower, helping me put this together, so if it looks good, say, say thanks to Mason, so. Also, as the mayor pointed out, this will be my last Alderman's Corner, so I hope you give me a little latitude, maybe I'll, maybe some of my projects will be a little older than just the last year.
It's all right, brother.
I just like to talk to them. A lot of times when I talk to people about the fourth ward, they ask, where is the fourth ward? So this is the way I normally define it, it's, it includes West High, the, the Old Copley Hospital, and Aurora University. The pictures of each one of those there.
Click the clicker, so we can see what you're looking at.
Oh, there you go, I got to do both, oh, okay.
There you go.
Thanks, Mayor. You can also see, while Ward Two goes over the river slightly in the downtown, the fourth ward is the one that really does go, we have both sides, about a third of the ward is on the east side. Other key elements in the fourth ward, especially in the downtown, are our Suntory Library and the River Street Plaza that included in the fourth ward. We have four active neighborhood groups that I meet with on a quarterly basis. I did the math, it was over a hundred and twenty neighborhood meetings over the last twelve years, so tried hard to, to reach out with the community. I'm kind of old-school, I used a, a postcard, which worked most of the time. Some people said, I didn't come to your meeting, but I kept your postcard because it had your phone number on it, so we'll, we'll see how that works in the future. Some major projects in the fourth ward include the Historic Lincoln School, which was vacant for over fifteen years. Recently, it's been renovated to provide thirty-six workforce houses down on South Lake Street. So a beautiful project, and we did a ribbon cutting on there just recently. So as you can see, we have the old building, but we also have some brand-new apartments in the back, twenty-two brand-new apartments, and I believe they're all full. So here's a project I, I never tire from talking about, was the Old Copley Hospital, which is now Bloomhaven. I think most of you have seen this, but for those that, that haven't been over there, it's a beautiful project, which renovated the Old Copley Hospital into senior housings for, called Bardwell Seniors. And then we have Weston Bridges for folks with disabilities, and, and we're going to have a ribbon cutting here fairly quick because VNA is also coming into, into the building, as well as School District one-thirty-one has their, their world headquarters right there. A place that I have enjoyed here recently, we had a ribbon cutting at the Cafe eighteen-eight-eight. A beautifully restored building was the original hospital and now has delicious pastries and Down on Second Street, Jake's Machine, which is one of our local manufacturers, done well over the years, had put on a major addition on the Second Street, and, and we're happy that they continue to do well. had put on a major addition on the second street, and we're happy that they continue to do well. Hesse House is also in the fourth street on South, fourth ward on South River Street. And recently, we did a ribbon cutting there where we doubled the, almost doubled the capacity to two-hundred-and-eighty beds for folks. There's a lot of resources at this facility that help people try to end homelessness, so Hesse House does a great job working hard. Also, this new, this new building affords a lot of amenities that we didn't used to have, so it's really very nice and has had a lot of support from not only the city, but the state and the feds. Over on Cross and Middle, we have some new apartments, fifteen new apartments in an old storage building. And we're soon to be open the Foreign Exchange Brewery on the ground floor. We're really looking forward to this one, and it's part of what we call the, you know, the fourth ward downtown. I think we call it the warehouse district, Mayor, so. Another building that is currently in operation as Company two fifty-one for catering is proposed to be forty-five new apartments, and this will be at the very south end of Ward four. Got these photos today from Aurora University. These aren't actually photos, but renderings of what the new library will look like, what's going to be built right in front of the parking garage right on Prairie Street. So it'll be a, not to say that the parking garage isn't attractive, but this will really, I think, be a star of Prairie. So I'm very happy that AU continues to be a positive force in our community. Now we have some neighborhood improvements. This is something that has got some age to it. The rain gardens that predominantly were over on the near east side, we did those a number of years ago. This is a great photo to show what they can look like. They don't work everywhere. You can see later in my presentation, we have a lot of sewer separation projects. If the soils don't work for these projects, then we can't do it. But we did do it, and we saved a lot of money, and we got some grant money to do it with, so. And I think it provides a beautiful street scrape for near east side. Over on Wood Lawn, over the years, there's been a number of dilapidated houses that we have purchased with fourth ward funds, and the city has demolished. We're looking for these to be future development for downtown. They're just a block from the library today. Another major project that I'm very happy that the city was able to take a leadership role on is the YMCA. This large site had a building that was damaged by water. It was unsafe. We had a lot of problems with folks trying to get into it. Our engineering and property standard department did a moment, woman's job of cleaning that up. And then we did also have our contractor demo the building. And while we don't own it, we certainly, it makes for a nice open space, which I've got a lot of resident input of open space would be a great use for that property. Back over towards the Bardwell neighborhood, we put in some speed signs. These are signs that, you know, flash the speed and help us slow things down. We put those at schools. We have one at Bardwell, and we have one over Greeman on the west side as well. Here's a long list of projects that we worked on last year, paving projects which I think are very important to keep a neighborhood looking good. Couple of the bigger projects were Garfield and Fourth Street over on the east side. Have a number of pictures here. They really look nice when you, when you take care of them. And then we have a number of projects coming up for two thousand twenty-five. These are part of the frequently asked questions that I get. And the larger projects are Garfield, finishing up Garfield, and on Lafayette Street, the entire length of Lafayette from Marion down to Ashland. Another frequently asked questions that we, I think we all get, are about the lead service line replacements. And last year, we replaced ninety-nine lead service lines. The, we had a couple of projects, Lebanon and Marion sewer replacement. And then, of course, by, we go in and take care of the service lines when we do those. But the other forty-four were on-call replacements for locations that maybe the Buffalo Box was leaking or some other damage to the system, so we went and did those individually. So we're working our way down the list on those. And then in two thousand twenty-four, we're going to do some sewer separation projects on Marion and, I don't know, Lafayette. Lebanon Pearl also gets separation projects, and we have some interesting photos on those as well. And community events. So wards four, five, and six always go together and do a shred event, and it's always been very popular. This year's event will be June twenty-eighth. June twenty-eighth, let me make sure I got this one, June twenty-eighth. And it's, I know a lot of you do shred events, but this is particularly valuable to a lot of our seniors, and they line up early, and we're happy to take care of them on that way. This is our Coats for Kids project. This is a project that we've been doing citywide since two thousand and ten. The city is a great partner in this, as is CIS and the Salvation Army. We purchase fifteen hundred coats and deliver them to each one of the elementary schools in the city of Aurora that signs up for them, and it's been a great project. We use the social workers in the, in the schools to identify those kids in need of a coat, and hopefully we'll be able to do that project again. And the last one we have to talk about is the river cleanup. We've done this for a number of years. This is pictures from two thousand twenty-three. We clean up the Fox River every spring in cooperation with Fox Metro and the Fox Valley Park District. This year's event will be April twenty-sixth from eight AM to eleven, so if you'd like to get out and help, we'd appreciate it. And thanks for your attention.
Thank you for everything you've done for the city of Aurora and serving the fourth ward, brother. Got a great career. All right, that concludes our, no, no, Alderman's Corner. We are in need of a closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Open Meetings Act, Section two. C one to discuss the appointments, employment, compensation, dismissal of specific employees of the public body. Section two C five to discuss the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body. Section two C eleven to discuss pending or imminent litigation. Do I have a motion to enter the closed session, and thereafter adjourn the committee of the whole meeting with no further final action or public business? But a motion made by Alderman Smith, second Alderman Lash. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrera?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco? Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries. All right, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting after closed session? There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman.
Second.
Alderman Bade. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrera?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This meeting will be adjourned after the closed sessions. Get five minutes to have everybody file out of the chambers. Thank you all very much this evening for participating in this COW meeting.